...private session.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Lacy Township Board of Education, September 21st, 2015. Adequate notice of this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and to the Beacon on January 7th, 2015, and by posting the notice in the Forked River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Will you all join me in standing and saluting the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to say, that sounds awesome to hear all those voices in unison. Now I'd like to invite down the Lacy Township High School Choir, under the direction of Ms. Stephanie Fale, to present the National Anthem, and I ask that everybody stand for the anthem.
what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much, that was wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Fale, and students. We can't think of a better way to kick off our new school year. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, thank you. Beautiful.
Thank you. Now to get the boring business out of the way, the old business. Do I have a motion in regard to the minutes for the special meeting? Do I have a motion for the minutes for the special meeting called on July 13th, 2015?
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain.
Mrs. DeSensza.
I believe I was abstained, abstain.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Abstain.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes.
We're talking about the 18th.
Yeah, we went, no, we did July 13th.
I have to change it.
July 13th.
I abstain, sorry.
Yeah, three yeses.
Mr. Bidwell, I know you were part of the meeting.
I was present.
Yes, July 13th.
She went out of order.
Yeah, I went out of order.
Okay, since you went out of order.
Oh, I apologize. I, I'm looking at page one.
Page nineteen.
Oh, I apologize. Did I foul you up?
Yeah, I'm okay.
(laughing).
So take me out.
We did the second from the bottom. Dave, do you want to change your?
I will, you can change mine to yes.
Yeah, apologize, I was actually looking at the minutes and the July 13th are first in the book. I apologize, so going along with page nineteen, so I don't lose any other board members. Do I have a motion to, for the board to approve the minutes of the agenda meeting held on August 18th, 2015?
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain.
Mrs. DeSensza.
No.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
I abstain, I was not here.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes.
Do I have a motion that the board approve the minutes and the appropriate attachments of the regular meeting held on August 18th, 2015?
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Mrs. DeSensza.
No.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Abstain.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes.
Do I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the private session held on August 18th, 2015?
Move.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Roll call.
Abstain.
Mrs. DeSensza.
No.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Abstain.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Abstain.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes.
Do I have a motion that the board approve the minutes of the private session held on July 13th, 2015? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Roll call.
Did you second, are you seconded?
Yeah, I seconded.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensza.
July 13th, I must abstain, I was abstained.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
I abstain, I wasn't here.
Mr. Schubiger.
Abstain.
Mrs. Torrell.
Now turning to page thirty-nine. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills totaling in the amount of $4,716,759.11? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensza.
Um, yes, with the exception on bills 260527, 953013, 953014, on page fifteen of the Bills and Claims Report, and I'm passing with a cross now.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
No.
Mrs. Torrell.
Do I have a motion through the adoption of this resolution?
Move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensza.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes.
Now turning to page forty. Mr. Stein, do you have anything more at this time?
Okay, I request the board adopt the motion to hold a private session to discuss personnel matters with the information made, as made available to the public in accordance with
I move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, thank you. Now, for something that's a little bit more exciting than listening to me, we have the student representatives with us, and I'd love to hear what they're doing to kick off the year. So who would like to begin?
Hi, well, the Unsung Hero Award for September is Brielle Galani, who could not, who could not attend the meeting this evening, and she will be accepting her board in the actual remaining. Freshman orientation was September 4th, we want to thank all the officers that helped out. September 8th was our pep rally, the winner was the girls volleyball team. September 10th was back to school night, we want to thank everyone for helping out and everyone who attended. September 11th is freshman, was freshman election meeting, freshmen signed up on the 11th, they recorded their speeches on the 21st, and it will be posted to the freshman class website, an email to the freshmen. Voting will take place on a Google form on the 25th. September 24th is our first SGA meeting, students should be dropped off at the front of W Hall at 6:30 and be picked up at the same place at 7:30. Make sure to bring non-perishable food items for the food bank. September 26th is the Apple Festival, you can sign up on the SGA website. October 2nd is the new student breakfast, they get a chance to meet all the SGA officers and administrators. On October 10th, homecoming decorations will be put up and students can sign up via the school, the SGA website. We will be going to a leadership meeting at TCNJ on October 13th, and selected officers will be attending the meeting. There is a SGA meeting October 14th, students should be dropped off at W Hall at 6:30 and picked up at the same place at 7:30. Homecoming setup is October 16th, and students can sign up via the SGA website. Homecoming is October 17th, tickets will be $20 if you buy them between October 6th and 8th, and 25 if you buy them between October 13th and 15th. And homecoming cleanup will be October 18th, and all freshmen and sophomores are to help with cleanup from 10 to 11:30 a.m. And that is all for us.
Thank you very much, lots going on. And at this time, so at this time, I will turn over the floor to Dr. Anthony for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Torrell. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Principal Hantuch, because he will be introducing the Students of the Month to us.
Thank you, Dr. Anthony, if I may invite the board force to join us on the side. Each month, I get the privilege, and it's a personal and professional privilege to introduce to you our students in the spotlight, our Seniors of the Month, and it's amazing the background and the vastness of the education that they get, not only in the community but from the school. So I'd like to begin with our first Senior of the Month for September, Kelly Reitmeyer. Kelly, welcome. Hello, Mr. Hantuch, welcome to Senior Spotlight September, where we meet our outstanding Seniors of the Month. Joining me now is Kelly Reitmeyer. Kelly has been ranked at the top of her class since she entered Lacy Township High School as a freshman. By the end of the school year, she will have completed eleven college-level courses and will likely start her college career as a sophomore. Kelly, can you tell us about some of the work that you've done here, at least, to get yourself prepared academically?
Um, I like to just work really hard and I like to stay organized, it really helps me to get all my work done, and I, I studied really hard to get to the point that I am now.
You do a lot of hard work every single day in this school, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, I always try and work my hardest, just, you know, always do my best.
Can you tell us about some of the sports and activities you're involved with?
Um, I am a fall cheerleader, and I also am on the all-girl competition cheer team. I'm the treasurer of National Honor Society, I'm on the advisory board for the Association Against Drugs and Alcohol, I'm also, I'm involved in the Student Government Association, and Heroes and Cool Kids, and Peer Mediation.
So what do you like to do outside of school? Though you're busy in school, what do you like to do outside of school?
Um, I like to just hang out with my friends and my family, you know, watch movies, read books, but a lot of the times I'm doing the schoolwork.
All right, still in our learning year, what are your future plans?
Um, I don't know exactly where I want to go or what I want to do, but I want to go to a four-year university, I'm thinking about doing cheerleading in college. A career that I'm looking into is maybe nursing.
Well, whoever gets you is going to be very fortunate to have you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Kelly, on your selection of Senior of the Month.
Thank you.
We'll be right back with Jack Moss.[866.01][866.01](applause)
Kelly, you probably don't remember, but I remember you when you were just in kindergarten, so it's been very, the long road, you make me feel very old, but I'm very proud, and we're all proud of all your accomplishments, and I, I'm sure her parents are here. So can her family stand up?[888.23][888.23](applause) And thank you for sharing your talents with us.
Congratulations, Kelly. Next up, we have Jack Moss. Welcome back to Senior Spotlight September, now joining us is Senior of the Month, Jack Moss. Jack is ranked in the top 1% of his classes and is involved in a number of sports and extracurricular activities here at Lacy. Can you tell us about your activities that you're involved with?
Uh, well, first of all, I'm in NHS and inter-generational clubs with the school, I also play varsity tennis in the spring, and I also play soccer for a club team.
So you're busy year-round. Can you tell us about some of the activities you're involved with in the community?
I volunteer at the library, the Lacy Library, for volunteers for not only NHS but also to help out with the community.
That's great, so I guess if you're not busy in school, you're busy on the outside.
Yeah.
What would you like to do outside of school in your own time?
Uh, I like to hang out with friends, play soccer, tennis, just be active, really.
All right, this is the toughest question we ask seniors, what are your future plans?
Uh, I plan on going to college to become a mechanical engineer at Stevens, Intuit, Wythe, or B.I., there's some of those schools I'm looking at.
That's excellent, great schools too. Congratulations, Jack, on your selection of Senior of the Month. That's going to wrap up Senior Spotlight September, we'll see you next month.[987.23][987.23](applause)
Jack, congratulations, I'm glad you're going to stay close to home, so you can come back and help us out with our STEM program, okay, after graduation.
Thank you.
Thank you, is your family here?[1005.82][1005.82](applause)
All right, thank you, Dr. Anthony, thank you, board, for allowing us to present, and here we are, 2015-16 school year, next month we'll bring There's some open seats down here now, if you guys want to move down.
If anybody would like to move down, feel free to do so, there's a couple of rows empty.
So, members of the Board of Education, as you know, we've started a new tradition, and that is to invite those who have supported our school community with very generous donations, and tonight, I am so proud to let you know that some of the donors are joining us tonight. On page fifty of your agenda, you will find the complete list of people who have donated to our community, and I can tell you, and I'm certain that everyone on this day would be able to also share, we cannot do what we do without your support and your caring, gentle guidance, guidance rather, when you're helping us with initiatives. And so, it is just an honor to share with you that Thompson Healthcare and Sports Medicine has donated $10,000 for the Cubby Fit Fitness Trail Project at Cedar Creek, and this project is a vision of the staff there, and they are continuing to literally blaze the trail for something that they envision that they want. So I want to recognize Principal Renuska and her staff, and Thompson Healthcare and Sports Medicine for their very generous $10,000 donation check, along with the staff orientation breakfast for each one. So I see Mrs. Renuska and Mrs. Donahue, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Sure, absolutely.[1185.01][1185.01](laughing) Yes?
And are, is there folks here from Thompson here?
Yes, Dr. Rob Thompson, his wife Courtney.[1201.13][1201.13](applause) Thank you, Dr. Anthony, and Board of Education, I just wanted to take one minute to kind of explain how this came to be. Thank Dr. Rob Thompson, his wife Courtney, his office manager Dave Simon, on behalf of Cedar Creek and Mrs. Donahue. Last year, three teachers from Cedar Creek, Mrs. Peck, Mrs. Zito, and Mrs. Engler, who are here tonight, came to me with an idea to start a new club, and they asked to form a fitness committee to create plans for a walking trail and fitness clusters for a recess field. They researched a nearby school district who also had this idea to raise funds, and were very successful in doing so. Our project was then entitled Cubby Fit, and it would begin as a third and fourth grade walking club, and the three teachers offered to volunteer their time in the mornings to walk with children and promote physical fitness and well-being. The hope is also that this fitness area will be utilized to assist our special needs population during the school day to facilitate their unique learning styles. The equipment and the walking trail is very beneficial to our autistic population, their well-being, it promotes whole-body listening and learning. Throughout the day, our kindergarten and second-grade students, along with third and fourth grade, will also use the space during physical education classes and recess. As educators, we know that through research and daily practice, that exercise helps all students to develop a high self-esteem, improve concentration and learning. We often take brain breaks during the day, and also implement something called Brain Gym. With this donation, we are well on our way to achieving our goal of a healthy lifestyle for all, promoting a healthy brain, a healthy body, and spirit. So we truly appreciate our partners in the community, and Dr. Thompson, and we thank you for becoming a Cubby Fit donor. Yes. Oh, we're going to do a picture and tweet. Lucille, Lorne, and Anne, if you could please come down.[1358.63][1358.63](applause) They don't want to be recognized, and I didn't tell them I was doing this, but they started the whole thing, they spent hours looking for grants, writing up proposals,
I just want to say briefly, this was brought to the board a while ago, and I think all the other board members said the same thing, "What a wonderful idea, but we cannot afford it." So thank you to Cedar Creek, showing your teamwork, all the teachers working together, figuring out how to get this done, because our students are going to spend it tremendously. So thank you.
And we have more giving. It is an honor to recognize Rosa Stites and Laura Kropcia from Lacy Food Bank, are you here?
Rosa Stites is here.
Where, I don't see her.
Right here.[1453.51][1453.51](laughing) Come on down, come on down, because they
have donated-
Stand up, Rosa.
They have donated just an enormous amount to our students with backpacks filled with school supplies for Forked River, for Lenoka Harbor, for MilCon, and we are so grateful, thank you.[1473.01][1473.01](applause) All right, so the camera's panning around, Rosa, I'll see you, I'll see you next week.[1488.13][1488.13](laughing) And also, we want to also thank the DeSensza family and Regina DeSensza for the donations for a scientific calculator in the amount of $25, and a cash donation for 2015, can you imagine, senior class problem, for $50. Thank you, Mrs. DeSensza. And also, to all of our PTA, PTO, PTC groups, your organizations donated staff orientation breakfast on our first two days, and it is just a beautiful way to welcome back our staff after a restful summer, so thank you for taking such care of our teachers and our staff, so a special thank you to you as well. I also just have a few quick announcements. I want to recognize Lily and Lori. If you had an opportunity, you would see that Lily drew our picture, the cover for the superintendent's report 2015, ready to grow into a new school year. That's Lily Ruckman. Wonderful, thank you so much, Lily, and Lori Dillio, who drew our picture for tonight's board agenda, back to Lacy Township Schools, go back to school. So thank you, they are just delightful. I also want to mention that in October, we will be doing a presentation, if you are interested in attending, to unveil some of the strategic work that we'll be doing with our high school guidance department. I've had an opportunity to meet with Ms. Chigaron, our new guidance supervisor, and she will be orienting our school community to the new website, our guidance website, which you can go online now and see, and we anticipate that every week it's going to get better and better, filled with more information for our students and our families, so I'd want to mention that in October. I also want to share with everyone that not only are we grateful for our parent groups, for all that you do, but we want to give back as well, so to our viewing audience, our parents, our staff, I'm asking you to please consider supporting all of our parent groups, including the performing arts boosters, the boosters, the main boosters at the high school, they give so much to our school, so I'm looking for you to join me in support of them. And then, lastly, I am pleased to report to the Board of Education that we had an incredibly awesome and successful back-to-school in September. Between our rollout for our high school technology initiative, to some of the new curriculum projects we are working on, I need to commend all of our staff, from our custodial and maintenance staff, to our transportation department, to our food service, to our administrators, and to our teachers and our support staff, everyone, you have done an incredible job to have one of the best school openings that we could have imagined. So with that, I invite you to please join us on our website, so that you can see all the digital information that we handed out tonight, and I hope that we continue to have a very, very successful school year, as we already started. At this time, it is my pleasure to share with you that we are going to roll out for the first time and unveil the Strategic Plan 2015-18, which is entitled Vision. And so, I'll be co-presenting, and Mr. Giordano, who served as the Strategic Planning Committee Chair, will be kicking off tonight's presentation, and he'll be joined by several of us, myself, then Mrs. Downing, and also Mr. Schubiger. So at this time, we're going to sort of orient ourselves to where you are, and sit back, and I hope that you enjoy our presentation. I hope that you've had an opportunity to pick up your handout, if you need one, please raise your hand, because we'll probably want to get one to you, and then you'll be following along, you will not probably be able to see all of the words up here, especially those of you in the back, so we're just going to orient you to the document. So with that, okay, Mr. Giordano.
So, several years ago, upon being elected to the board, Lord Member McAvoy and myself went to school board strength out in, out by Princeton, New Jersey.
So several years ago, upon being elected to the board, Lord Member McAvoy and myself went to school board strength out by Princeton, New Jersey. We spent three days in an intensive workshop. And one of the things that came out of that workshop was the importance of the Strategic Plan. Most businesses today have a strategic plan in place. So we thought it would be a great idea to bring that vision back to the school district. We socialized it amongst the other board members, and here we are today. Next slide, please. So our journey, we realized that we needed to talk about, what was the vision of the school district? What was our mission statement? And what are the core values that we see here in Lacy Township? We wanted to align ourselves and talk about what our strengths and what our weaknesses were. We wanted to bring members of the community together to get a collective approach to building the vision and strategy for the next three years in our school district. Right now, we're gonna show a short video that talks about what we found. The process was really to bring everybody in the community together. And we were hoping to get a nice blend of parents, students, community leaders, council governors, law enforcement, teachers and administrators, to have them all come together collectively to share their ideas about what's working in our school district, what's great about our town. And then share some of the things that they have concerns with. And really to come together with our collective ideas on how to make Lacy the best school district it can be, and put a plan forward strategically to guide the school district for the next three to five years.
Our purpose in starting out with what's working well in the school district and points of pride is to create a sense of the network that exists in the community. Getting people to create new relationships. And you build those relationships around the positive, not around the negative. Now, you can't talk about what's working well without talking about how we might want to ratchet it up to make it even better for the students and the community.
I think a lot of us touched on walk scheduling, walk rocks. So I think that is a good initiative, collaborative efforts. So that's something we always did on high school, and it's nice to see that at elementary and elementary schools as well.
People that have taken care of the grounds of the high schools or all the schools, it's very well, passions there, you can see it.
All of these people are part of the community that support our schools. And we have an obligation to open the door, to hear what their thinking is about what the vision is for the future.
We believe that student-centered programs are very successful in our town, both academic and the non-academic programs.
There's a strong sense of community and interdependence among its citizens. And there are plenty of opportunities for student self-discovery through extracurricular activities.
Communication tools is many things. Any social media that's been able to get information out to students, the portal, technology, all those communication tools are very important.
I was happy to see that there was a lot of parents that came out, and it was a good turnout, because I thought I was gonna be one of few. I learned that the parents are concerned about the future of kids in the Lacy school system. And that they're very proud of the facilities, they're very proud of the teachers, and they're very proud of the community involvement.
Tonight, our focus is primarily on the vision for Lacy Township Public Schools. By the end of the evening, we will be listening to the 20 or so groups that are here tonight, presenting their thinking in their group. And what we will begin to see is an emergence of that vision of what they would hope the school district would look like through this campaign.
We're talking about some accountability, in terms of homework, testing.
We'd like to see increased technology, one-to-one implementation among teachers and students, and continuity between all four of the elementary schools.
We talked about the need for more technological offerings, one-to-one initiative, more computers in students' hands.
We will take the collective information across the groups tonight and identify goal areas. So I would expect that out of the work tonight, we'll see somewhere between five and seven topics emerge.
In three years, we would like to see increased communication between parents and all schools throughout the district.
Social media awareness, help parents and educate students on responsible ways. That's a good point. Thinking about that, we really have a focus on.
So what is the message that you have in place to help students with the transition from graduating high school to existing in the workforce and for additional educational opportunities once they leave here?
Well, I learned that there are a lot of talented people in the community, a lot of different areas of interest. But all it uses is to help the school improve themselves.
I discovered that there were a lot of commonalities between the various groups, whether that be teachers, or students, or interested people from the community and parents.
So tonight is our third evening, and it's all about action steps. Helping the Board of Education and the staff to identify what steps they might take to help enable the achievement of the goals that have come together from the second evening.
We're working on facilities and finance, so we're starting with the needs assessment for each of the schools to see where their funds are being spent.
Current contracts, current ongoing updates.
We're looking at the partnership of colleges set up with, obviously, government and the portal are a little wide.
We wanted to see, how can we ensure that having more computers actually equates into better education for students?
Support between administration and families.
Administration, teachers, everybody.
We will generate tonight several hundred ideas across the board of these six goal areas. And it will be a tough job shifting through them to figure out what might work best from those ideas.
I've learned tonight how the community feels about all the areas that we discussed, and some great ideas that we could implement with no cost. And then some that we're gonna have to find financing for if we want to implement them. It was very important for all of us to be here throughout this whole process to hear what the community has to say, what they feel are the areas that are in need of improvement, and what areas they feel we're doing well with.
I think my participation individually is important, because I'm a teacher in another district. Also, I'm a parent in this district, and I'm a citizen of the community. So I feel that if you're any one of those, that you're important.
Knowing my children are going to be set on a specific plan is very important to what our community wants to do to bring everything together.
My participation as a student, particularly a high school senior who sees a lot of issues around the school, it offers a valuable perspective from within the school district.
As you guys can see, there was a tremendous amount of work that went into this. I'd like to thank Jeremy Merman, Mr. Merman, for capturing all three of the seminars and bringing it together and putting it up and going for you to see. I'd also like to thank Dr. Charles Ivory for facilitating the discussions. From a show of hands to the audience, how many people participated in the event? Okay, for those of you that attended, we thank you. For those of you that attended, you could see the diverse group of people that were part of this. We had administrators, we had teachers, we had students, we had parents, community leaders, members of law enforcement. And it was just really neat to see how everybody's ideas came together, and a lot of the common themes, a lot of commonality, not only about what we thought was great and what works in Lacy Township, but a lot of the concerns that we have. So with that, we have a copy of the plan that I believe we're gonna distribute to you tonight. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Anthony to go over some more detail on the Strategic Plan.
So in your document, if you orient yourself, you'll see the vision statement, you'll see the mission statement now has been updated, and the points of pride that Mr. Giordano has just left you with. And we had over 250 people come out over three nights, and that was incredible. We were so excited to see you, and really, all of the people who came from all walks of our community to share their voice. But we knew there was another voice out there that we wanted to capture. And so we did that through Thought Exchange, which really was an almost virtual conversation. So this is one of the first times that we have ever done anything like this. In fact, we are, and may be, the only school district in New Jersey and possibly on the East Coast, who has taken this next step to get feedback from people. So I want to orient you now to our Thought Exchange site. And this will be available to you tomorrow morning on our website. You can look for a slide where you'll find our presentation, the video, and then the work with Thought Exchange. So let me share with you that we had 536 participants who participated in Thought Exchange. So if you add that to the 250 voices that I just mentioned earlier who came out, that's incredible. And so this was a three-part process. 536 participants shared 1,387 thoughts. And those thoughts received 26,900 stars. So let me tell you a little bit about that. So this past spring in 2015, we invited people into our, in our school community to share their thoughts about our schools. And I'm very excited to share with you those results. The first thing that we had was, that rose to the top, was our stakeholders appreciate the quality of teachers and staff. This theme of quality teachers and staff came directly through the voice of the people that we worked with, and it also came through our virtual conversation. Communication, extracurricular activities, parental and community engagement, and school environment. These were the things that our community appreciated. And then areas where they felt we could improve is this whole concept of testing versus learning. And if you delve into this site, you're going to see it is just a voluminous voice of parents telling us they are really concerned about testing and learning. The second is facilities and resources, the third is curriculum and program offerings, the fourth, communication, and the fifth is parental and community engagement. Here's Mr. Giordano. And he says that Thought Exchange has allowed us to engage members of our community, enabling them to share their views and opinions on what they believe should be the top priorities of the Lacy Township School District. This information is critical as we move forward in building out the Strategic Plan and the direction of Lacy Township. And I said that Thought Exchange has engaged our school community in ways we have never done before. This level of communication and feedback provides us with valuable information as we seek to make our schools better each day for our students and for our community. And as the school superintendent, I was excited to read the thoughts shared. I was able to hear the voices of our school community on so many topics and issues. So now let me take you through the site. You will actually be able to see all of the thoughts. We had 90% of our participants were parents and guardians. And this was very important to our Board of Education. They really wanted to hear from our parents. 7% staff, 1% students, and 2% community. And there were just three questions. They were, what are some of the concerns you have about our school this year? What are the things that you appreciate most about the school this year? And what are some things that you'd like to say about our school this year? And obviously, we have six schools, and we worked in a very fast pace, May to June. So now you can see results by school, or you can see results by district. And I'm just going to scroll down. And so if we wanted to just see the Fork and River results, we would click right here for Fork and River. And then we would be able to see the answers just to Fork and River School. If I hit expand all, and I would want all of our parents. So here, for Fork and River, the question is, what are some concerns you have about our school? And these are ranked. So 35 of parents and people were really concerned about academics and programming. And so much so that these thoughts received 322 affirmations that this was really important. And so I can actually open this up, and I can see every single thought that everyone shared. And I can see if they were recognized by others through consensus, or what their passion was for the particular topic. So let me just take a look at number seven here. That kids spend too much time taking standardized tests. This received a lot of passion. You can see the hearts here, a lot of people agreed with this particular comment. So let me just go back. And facilities and infrastructure, transportation. So all of this is available now to you, for everyone to see. And it's available for every school, and our district as well. So as I shared, this is available for you tomorrow, if you want to start to spend some time to navigate. There were three parts to the process. The first one was people shared our thoughts. And then people identified which ones really resonated with them. And they're all themed. So we are going to take all of this information, we are going to continue to work with it, which I'm going to share with you in just a little bit. You're gonna do that tab, alt again. Okay. So from all of the work in Thought Exchange, all of those themes and the work that our Strategic Planning participants did, Mrs. Downing is going to share with you really the core areas and the goals that emerged. Mrs. Downing.
Thank you. And so we took all of the information, and we divided it into four major goals. If you look up at the screen, the first goal is student achievement and success for all. The second goal is technology. The third, family and our community. And the last goal is finance and facilities. So now let's begin with goal number one, student achievement and success for all. If you look up at the screen, I don't know if you can see it, but you'll see that goal one is divided into three major themes. High-impact teaching, support and resources, and 21st century skills. And underneath that, you'll see five columns. And those columns are strategic targets. For example, I'm not gonna insult your intelligence and stand here and read all of this. But let's just look at the first column, and there's emphasis on rigorous literacy instruction. As an example of this target, the district has implemented reading gen in grades three and four, and also SIPs, systematic instruction in phonics and sight words. A targeted reading intervention program that the district will be continuing next year. So some of these targets, we've already started implementing programs. And others, we have work to do. Also, you can see under higher education and past, under higher education and past, wait a minute, let me just see. I don't have my glasses, so. wait a minute, let me just see, I don't have my glasses, so. Thank you. Post-secondary, there's a section about implementing guidance. That was a very strong area that people were concerned about, the guidance, especially in the high school. And the board is very concerned about that as well, and that's one of our strategic targets. The next goal is technology. Now that, technology was a high priority amongst the planners in the strategic planning. It's also been a very big concern from the Board of Education. There are three themes under this goal. Access, communications and collaboration, and digital and social responsibility. If you look under the first column, you'll see the one-on-one initiative is listed there. And that was partly, that was saved in the budget this year. That was something the boards struggled with, and we came about and got the one-to-one initiative in the high school. As this plan goes, they'll move down to the middle school and the elementary schools. Now, this strategic plan ensures that technology is an integral part of our learning and our thinking, and it all has to tie in for our students to be successful. I think this was the most important goal out of all four that came out of the strategic planning, that technology is a high priority. The third goal is family and our community. Now, under this one, you'll see three themes or strands. Relationships, stakeholder involvement and engagement and partnership. The targets under this goal are services and outreach, maximize resources, and share and celebrate. So for example, under maximize resources, continue to partner with Lacy Township Police. We have a wonderful relationship with our police department. It also works as a community. We have a strong relationship with the municipal alliance. They do a fabulous job working for our schools, especially in the red night out, and working with the township officials to have shared, what am I looking for? Share services, thank you. Also, under this category would be community groups like Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and that would be under that theme. So if you can see, you're going to have to take time to read these and see all the targets, all listed under each category. And the last goal was finance. Under finance, you have three themes again, or strands. Accountability, facilities, and revenue. An example here in the last column where it states to identify and consider potential new revenues, revenue sources, including the following, local, state, and federal and grants. Here, we continue to work with the town again on shared services, work with other districts on sharing services like transportation. So there's a lot of collaboration with other agencies under this category that we will be working on. Now, this hard work, all these goals and all these targets, were the hard work of over 100 people taking part, from parents to law enforcement, local government, staff, community members. And these action steps will guide us, excuse me, in the direction that this district wants to go. And thanks to your help, those of you who are here and those of you who weren't here that are at home watching this, we can't thank you enough for your input and giving us the direction on where you want us to go with this district. So thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts.
So from this work, you might be thinking, what are the next steps? And so this just gives you a hierarchy of what will happen next. So we will be identifying chairs for each of the goal areas, and then we will be identifying co-chairs who will start to work on each of the strands, those strategic targets. So this would be an example of what it might look like, where you'll have a chair, we'll have co-chairs, and then committee members working under each co-chair. So for example, in the family and community, so we would have a chair, just one person who's chairing that committee. And then we would have co-chairs, somebody leading the relationship work, somebody leading the partnership work, and somebody leading the involvement work along with committee members. All of these committee members will be made up of staff, community members and leaders, students. So if you are interested in staying on with us, we invite you to do so. If you're hearing about our strategic plan for the first time tonight, I hope that you'll consider joining us. And tomorrow, if you'll visit our website, you'll be able to navigate through. You'll be able to watch that video again. Thank you again, Mr. Merriman, and all of your students did just incredible work. And you'll be able to see the plan as well, it's in an e-reader, and then you'll be able to see the Thought Exchange work. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Schubaker.
Thank you, Dr. Anthony. There's a lot of names up here on this board. We thank all of you. And for every name that's up here, we know as a board, administration, there are several more who care about our district and are part of this plan. Perhaps one of the most intriguing or most important aspects of this whole process for me and for many of us is that it is not the work of one board member, it is not the work of the entire board or administration. This is the work of our community, all of you, those watching, and everyone else throughout our community. That's what makes it special for us. You know, we talk about planning. This is a strategic plan, that's a living, breathing document, and that's how it's going to be. But on my 13 years here on the board, each and every year, we do a lot of planning. We have done a lot of planning. Most of that is through our budget process. That is our annual or yearly plan. But you know what? Talking as a group, it's clear. Our changing community and the changing needs of our students needed something like this. And this is what we have now. We are not the same community that we were five years ago or 10 years ago. In fact, probably not the same community as last year. So this is a great driving force for all of us. I'm proud to be a part of it. Personally, I'll tell you, my family moved me here in 1975. The reason for that, I think, is that this was a growing community that had the potential for a growing school district, a positive school district. A lot of people around that time moved here for that very reason. I grew up with a lot of people who I still stay in touch with. We're proud to be graduates of Lacy Township School District. And as a member of the board, there were so many facets of public education that we get involved in, we're responsible for. And to be candid, a lot of it can be quite frustrating. But what this exercise did for me is that it brought back the very part of what we're here for is education and for our students. So for that, I thank everybody because it was a great, it was a refreshing experience for me and I think a lot of us. It was needed, I think it's going to guide us. This is a three-year plan, but it's a good foundation for many, many years even more than that. So to everyone here, to everyone who participated in any way, to my colleagues on the board, administration, everybody, I hope you realize how much this means to our community going forward. I'm proud to be part of the community, and I'm proud that education is still at the very top of what people in our town think about and what we hold dear to our heart. So thank you.
We have certificates of appreciation for those of you who have participated with us. Dr. Clark will help us call your names and will pass out certificates. I'll do that if you. Okay, once again, thank you so much for your participation. I realize that some of the names that I call, some of you are here and some of you are not here, and I hope you'll get to see your names called on television, and we certainly will get your certificate to you. So we're going to start with Dawn Allen, Laura Anderson, Reverend Linda Applegate, Sean Bannon, I know Sean's here, Sasha. Clifford Barnamann, Tony Bartolus Hodge, Dawn Bentevegna, Jennifer Bentley, Dominic Biaoville, Laura Bavona, Jill Bove, Erin Bragg, Kim Broome, Carl Bullock, Melissa Bullock, Sarah Bullock, Julie Carter, Amanda Caserino, Kim Sedern, Margaret Clemente, Terry Collins, Tracy Collins, Christine Cooper, Wendy Corman, Peter Curatulo, Patricia Doyle, Toni Ann Eckerson, Rebecca Fielding, Kelly Fitzpatrick, Erin Foreman, Carrie Fracasso, Jaclyn Frazee, Katie Garcia, David Gordon, Patricia Gordon, Sarah Gorman, Elise Griffith, Lynette Hammerly, James Hanshu, Sherry Heck, Watson Halela, Heather Hicks, Leanne Holberg, Kip Hopper, Karen Hopson, Jody Hughes, Amy Ivors, Nick Giuliano, Peggy Sue Giuliano, Christopher Kenny, Linda Kirk, Ashley Claus, Kim Claus, Peter Kopack, Jim Corwin, Samantha Krieger, Michael Colsey, Roger Lang, Lisa Loja, Gloria Mako, Tracy Nangan, Sonia Marchatello, Jennifer Meyer, Carly Miller, Rhianna Mendez, Mary Moise, Lauren Malanew, Bill Moss, Amy Marizic, Marie Musmani, Holly Nimick, Heather Opacity, Anne Peck, Sue Pena, Lori Peters, Skip Peters, Christine Ping, Darlene Price, Carmella Quagliola, Gary Quinn, Robin Rue, Steve Rizzo, Cindy Sabatelli, Daria Saxton, Heather Scanlon, Maureen Schneider, Jessica Schaefer, John Simonson, Diane Sonnabend, Rita Starnar, Veronica Stowinski, Terry Stesny, Edward Toboco, Mallory Simzak, Anne Taylor, Colleen Tonkovich, Gary Vaccaro, Jean Van Houten, Tracy Van Nordwick, Kimberly Wade, Martin Way, Elise Winkle, James Woland, Lucille Ziegler, and last but not least, Cheryl Zimmerman. Thank you once again for all of your participation and hard work.
And for those who could not join us tonight, we are here under such a big, so thank you very much. Mr. Stein. Thank you. Dr. Anthony, do you have anything further?
No.
No, okay, thank you. And obviously, if you want to come down and get your certificate, if you weren't great enough to walk down, we're going to take a brief break. So anybody who would like to go home and make sure their child did their homework or is in bad, you can do so. Or if anybody else is just tired, we'll give you a minute to excuse yourselves. So thank you for coming. If anybody would like to move down, feel free to do so, there's a piece of pride. We're going to move on now to. We're going to move on now to comments from the public. I'm opening the floor. Please raise your hand. Let's all be courteous with each other. After you raise your hand, I call on you. Please go to the podium. Please state your name and your address. And please really be polite to everyone, please. Thank you.
Tony Rosoli said my speech.
Oh, I'm sorry. What is your name?
Tony Rosoli.
Tony Rosoli.
I've been before this board many times in the past. And brought some issues forward that were acted upon. Some to the good, some to the bad. I was going to introduce random drug testing about seven or eight years ago. I think it was the first time I believe Mr. Shubaker will remember that. I went to the township and I brought it from another district.
I think they're having trouble hearing you, sir.
Is that better? I haven't been around because I didn't have a place to live in Lacey. And I still don't. Sandy took that place. There's many of us that are still not back home. Been in the township since 1985. You're not new to me. And I guess I'm not new to you. But there are some things that I've been following that I think this board should be aware of. There are people, like myself, who don't have children in school. My children are grown and on their way doing whatever they do as far as their careers. All successful, proud of that. But people like me who are coming back to town that have faced adversity like other people in this community have not faced. Living out of a suitcase for almost three years is tough. It's not an easy thing to do. When I come back home, and I've tracked what you've been doing for the past three years through social media, through newspapers, through online newspapers, through the Asbury Park Press, and any other way I could, to see what you've been doing, including your videos that you produce, some of the things you've done, I'm not really happy about. And I want to let you know that. I'll be back, when I come back, finally, I'll be addressing many of these subjects in the future. And you're not going to like to hear what I say. So fasten your seat belts and be warned in advance. But the big issue is, to me, I just don't understand how a student population can go down and the cost of supporting the school system goes up. It's just not logical to me. I don't understand it. Yes, salary and payroll, largest controllable expenses of any organization, benefits, I understand that. But if the population is down and the costs still rise, then cut your salary and your benefits. Reduce the payroll. Two percent cap is not an entitlement. And I believe, my perception, and it's only my opinion, that this board, and the past boards of the past four or five years, believed the two percent cap to be an entitlement. It's wrong. It's a guide. It's a cap. It's the most. It's the max. It's not an entitlement to automatically give two percent increases to all the administrators under the new contract. Yes, under the new contract. By the way, has this memorandum of agreement been ratified?
It's on the agenda tonight.
So it hasn't been ratified?
That's correct.
Two things I saw right off the bat that I liked. The fact that you went to a two-tiered system. And your grandfather, you did something that I think was positive for the community in a way of longevity under the new language system. And also won the, on the leave, and the amount of leave taken. By the way, on the death leave, is that a paid leave? You increased the death leave to nieces and nephews. I don't know what's next, dogs or cats or whatever. But the point I'm asking is, is that a paid or not paid leave?
Paid.
Paid leave.
Paid leave for your niece or nephew if they pass away.
Okay. So it's immediate family and we've included nieces and nephews and it's all paid leave?
Correct.
Thank you for clearing that up. It was just a question. Like I said, the biggest issue to me is the student population in the past five years. What does the student population drop? How many students have we lost? Anybody? No one knows? It's kind of silly that no one would know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
How many students have we lost out of our student population in the past five years? How about approximate numbers? Have we gone down two or have we gone down 200? Or we don't want to make that public knowledge as to how much we went down. I'm just asking.
It's in our budget document, we just don't have it here with us. I would say four to 500.
Four to 500. It's gone down four to 500. We've lost that many. I would say, out of a 5,000 population, four to 500, it's a pretty good percentage of loss, is it not, Mr. Savage, your numbers guy? Pretty good loss, right? If we've reduced the population that much, yet the taxes do continue to go up with that two percent entitlement, it's not logical. Something I'm just not happy about. I don't understand it. Mrs. Terrell, one of the things you did while I was away, that I'd like to bring forward to you, and I really don't appreciate it, being a resident making comments at this podium, which is what it says in the agenda, comments by residents. Why would you allow someone who is not a resident of the township, but rather a union representative, get up to this podium during that specific period of time and make statements? As the president, why would you allow that?
Well, sir, as you know, because you've been coming to board meetings probably longer than I've been on the board.
Correct.
That it's public comment. So we've had many times...
It's not what it says. It says residents.
Many times over the years, we've had even people come from other communities to talk about different events, to talk about anything. It's public comment.
Okay. The thing that bothers me about that particular aspect of it, more than anything else, the union has a forum to bring forth union proposals for negotiation at the negotiation table. That's what they're supposed to do. All unions negotiate basically the same way. Why would we give them, in the union, more of an advantage than a resident? Who do you represent? The union? Or do you represent the residents? Just a question. Again, my perception, and may not be correct in your opinion, but it's really correct in mine.
Well, there's a difference between opinion and law.
I'm not asking you, Mr. Stein, with all due respect, I'm asking her.
And I answered, sir. As you know, anybody who comes, they identify who they are and where they live. So we have many people come from the community. We've had people come from national organizations to talk about events.
But during the time of union negotiation under a labor contract, why would you give them that additional opportunity?
Sir, we don't discriminate. Whoever raises their hands, I call upon them and they come down.
And if they start to talk about union issues, you should slam the gavel and tell them to sit down.
Thank you for your comments.
I have another question. Under the agenda this evening, it says we're doing a superintendent search.
Is that a question?
That's a fact. It's written. We're doing a superintendent search? Yes or no? I guess.
Is it on there? Does it say superintendent search?
So it must be a yes. We're doing a superintendent search. We lack confidence in our current administrative leader. Else we wouldn't be doing a search.
Now, there's a, just to clarify, there is an end of a contract. And the current board members decided that they wanted to, because they did not participate in the last superintendent search, we have a lot of new board members, we have four new board members who did not participate in the last search, that they sense the end of a contract, they wanted to have the process all over again. So I don't know what that process will bear out.
Okay.
But it will be a process.
So it may be that we maintain and keep our current administrative leadership, correct?
I cannot predict. I cannot predict.
Okay. All right, I'm going to let you off the hook easy tonight in case somebody else wants to talk, but I have many more subjects in the future. Get ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Moss, Miss Kane Drive, Forkett River Beach. Mr. Terrell, I'd just like to have one question answered. Wasn't the superintendent told well over a year ago, while she was under an indictment, which fell through, that she was not going to be rehired at that time?
The superintendent was given a notice of non-renewal.
Over a year ago, correct, sir?
Yes.
Oh, I want to know. Thank you.
Gary Vicaro, 116, Heatherington Court. First, I think we should begin every meeting with a song. I thought that was great. I enjoyed that.[1278.83][1278.83](APPLAUSE). So I want to thank Mr. Giudano and Mrs. McAvoy for initiating the strategic plan here. I was proud to be a participant of it. I think you have some great starting point with a lot of great goals and targets. One of the ones I want to talk about, kind of least on my question, is we have finance goals. And it talks about make sure resources are allocated directly. Says fiscal responsibility is critically important as a foundation to our relationship with our community. And it's important that district maintain the community's confidence that tax dollars are well spent. And I bring this up because I was, and this is not to pick on Dr. Anthony, but I was looking at Dr. Anthony's contract, and I had some questions and comments on monetary miracles. Now, the superintendent gets paid the cap salary set by the state, which is 167,500. That's a cap. However, within the contract, there's monetary miracles which allow you to circumvent the cap. And it basically says that the superintendent may receive a merit bonus in addition to her annual salary, no more than three quantitative merit criterion and/or two qualitative. And with that, she may receive a merit bonus of 3.3% of her base salary for each merit goal, quantitative goal, and 2.5% for each qualitative merit goal. So if I did my math correctly, basically that comes up to if all five goals are met, she basically would get an annual monetary bonus of $25,108, which comes up to an increase of approximately 15% per year, which I kind of find interesting when teachers get little less than 2%. And we're talking, I give you superintendent 15%. Correct me if I'm wrong, but no other administrator or teacher has monetary miracles. I didn't...
And just to clarify, that's actually set by state law.
Well, let me, I understand that. I looked at state law, using the administrative code. It does not require miracles. It talks about giving miracles. And additionally, it talks about the percentages. We give the maximum percentage allowable. We don't have to give that much. Additionally, I can tell you, that I looked into this, not every school district gives miracles. There are a lot of fiscally prudent school districts that do not give miracles. Barnetka, for example, which is similar to us. So my question is, basically, are we enacting all five? Is she eligible for all five? And if you can't tell me, I'll open them. What are they?
Well, and I can't tell you for the, for this current year, but as you see, every year since the law has been changed, superintendents, their salaries are frozen. You cannot give them...
I understand that.
...any raise at all. The only way, and this was set by the legislature, is through a merit goal system. Now, the merit goals have to be provided or suggested by the superintendent.
To be approved.
Then approved by the board. And so every year since this law's been changed, they're voted on, they're in the agenda. Then they, actually, before they get voted on, they go to the county executive. So the county...
I understand all that, I'm just saying that...
Right. So the county executive...
It's not a requirement. There's nothing that requires you to do that. And...
Right. But the board had made a deliberate decision, each and every year, to decide that we wanted merit goals to be set, and that we wanted her to work, Dr. Anthony, to work those merit goals. Those goals are then reviewed, and then the board decides if she's met all of them and if she's entitled to that cap.
I understand, but it still makes her eligible for that percentage. And in meeting with your goals of being fiscally prudent, the way I look at this, basically you have employee with the second highest salary, is a sole employee to receive annual merit bonuses, which circumvents her state mandated cap, which equates to a 15% annual increase where other employees receive less than 2%. The merit bonus is not required, and other school districts, not every school district employs a merit bonus. I think when you're looking at the new contract, it's something you should consider, meaning your goals of being fiscally prudent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone else at this time? Oh, straight, all the way back.
The way in the back.
Oh, I'm, I...
In the green.
No, and this nice lady's a blonde, yes.
My name is Rhianna Mendez. I live at 1771 Woodside Road in Forkett River. And I would like the board to consider the following while in contract negotiations. I know you're well aware of the increased cost of health care and the percentages that are applied to our pay. My own personal experience is that although my pay has increased by $108 per pay period since 2013, the amount that I take home has decreased by over $80 per check. This is due to increase again in January. Many teachers have had it go as high as $300 per pay period, depending on which level they are on their scale. While I know you're aware of these numbers on paper, I want to bring this attention to the effect as our community, as it's hitting our community. Everyone hits hard times and does what they need to do in order to get by. For many, it's a summer job to supplement the 10 weeks that essentially were laid off. But more and more, though, if you look, our teachers have had to help these second jobs throughout the school year to supplement the fact that we are returning for less and less. They are cutting lawns, waiting tables, serving at weddings, driving with Uber, cleaning houses on the weekends. At what point is this going to start affecting them emotionally, physically? At what point will it infringe on their inspiration to create new ways to teach, affected by exhaustion and stress? At what point will they look elsewhere in a career because it's taking too much? We are already the second lowest paid district in the county. And I'm seeing statistics being quoted of teacher-to-student ratios of 11 to 1. This may be factoring in our special education population, but in my experience, my regular homeroom at Mill Pond, I have between 25 and 29 with my fellow colleagues in class. I see posts online about trying to reduce budgets by 10% in a referendum. And maybe there are ways to cut budget items and find profit within the district, like offering our PD academy to other professionals at a cost. But cutting teachers' salaries, which have already been reduced so much, are not the answer. We are professionals and are not being afforded a salary as such. You pay an accountant a fair wage to be up on tax law and on their game to do the best for you with your taxes. If an accountant down the road offered the same services for half off but was working two or three other jobs in order to give you that rate, would that be the best choice? Are students who see their teachers working second and third jobs going to choose that field to go into in the future? Please consider looking up from the numbers that are on the paper and look at around what the teachers in the community are doing to make ends meet currently. Your job is not an easy one, but try to draw inspiration from our perseverance and dedication, and be creative with the budget, and do right by our salary guidance.
I'm going to go across this way. Anyone on that side of the room? Seeing no hands. Anyone in the middle? Seeing no hands. Over here. There's two. One at the way back, and then Mr. Latelli. So sort of the back in the green? Joe?
Yeah.
I can't see that far.[1787.51][1787.51](LAUGHING).
I can't see that far.[587.54][587.54](LAUGHING).
First, good evening. Thank you for having me up here. Joe Tracy, 452 Penn Avenue. Had a couple question, one question real quick. Becoming, actually, graduated '89, so I figured I have a son in school here, why don't we become more involved? I've been coming to some of these events, very interesting, to say the least. Also, I was part of the '88 state championship football team, so...[629.16][629.16](LAUGHING).[630.16][630.16](APPLAUSE). So, I guess a couple of weeks back, or a couple of meetings back, I know Mr. Stein had taken some criticism over bills and things and so forth. So, I'm looking at the bills and claims report, and there were some charges this month, probably $22,000, $23,000 for the month, which is pretty much on pace for what we talked about. I guess over, I guess it was the last meeting. Being a business owner myself, what I like to do is, you know, take a look at our aging reports, take a look at, you know, all the financials, get a breakdown, have a little detailed report as well. Is there any detail that's behind this? Because, again, seems, seems a little high, but at the same time, I'm not really quite sure what, what those charges are for. And you have to ask yourself, if we can reduce those costs, what are the things that we can cut out? That's what I would do as a business owner, so...
You're talking about the legal bills?
Legal bills for the past month.
For the past month?
Like, is there anything that stands out that we could cut out or...
I think as a board, we are looking and continue to look at, and we have even discussed, just even tonight.
This board has needed to address a voluminous amount of Oprah requests, which are contributing to about half of the legal bill this month.
Oprah requests? I'm sorry.
Requests for records, and they're coming in from various people looking for records. It is an extraordinary laborious process. It's an expensive one as well.
Sure.
So, that is what is causing this month's bill to be much higher than normal.
Okay. Is there, and I hate to bleed on the spot, what portion of that bill would be because of these Oprah requests?
About half.
About half?
About 65 percent, Mr. Stein.
Sixty? So, you're talking, okay, so 20-some thousand, so that-
Over $14,000.
So, what we're saying is we could cut out $14,000 when you look at the numbers. Who the heck is ordering these things? Because I know I haven't asked, right?
This month, there were three primary requesters under the, under the Open Public Records Act. Someone who makes a request is called a requestor.
Okay.
There was a man from, who lives in North Carolina, who made several requests. There was an institution, some type of a foundation from North Jersey, who made two requests. They were on the limited side. The, and there was a request from a board member that was pretty significant.
Okay. We have to respond to all those, I suppose? That's a...
Yes, they, they must be responded to, yes. In some way, they must be responded to.
All right.
Some of them can be very labor-intensive.
I guess my plea would be if, you know, to whoever it is, and especially if they're involved in this process, that's money that we certainly don't need to spend, so be careful and prudent on what we are requesting, because there is a cost to it, obviously. You know, I guess that would be my only point, would be to say, hey, listen, just, let's think about these things.
Mr. Tracy, let me assure you that over the years, Mr. Savage, as the board's custodian of records, has received a number of Oprah requests. Some of them do not require the board attorney's participation, some of them do.
Right.
Particularly where we get into issues involving confidential, really, really highly confidential records, such as student records and personnel records. The major request that was received this month involved 50 student records and 40 personnel records. We have a history in this district. My philosophy as a lawyer, Mr. Savage's philosophy as a business administrator, has always been, whatever we have, if the law allows us to produce it, we produce it. We don't hide anything, we don't spin it, we give it to you.
Right.
You want to make an issue of it, knock yourself out or respond to it. That's always been the way Mr. Savage and I have operated, and he and I have worked together in this district for 28 years. When we get into things like student records and personnel records, I'm just pulling out two examples, and there are-
Don't pull mine out.
-90 documents, 90 documents, that we are able to believe is part, would be responsive to the request, which we feel are improper, because they're confidential. And I think the community should know that from a, the, the community needs to know that as it relates to student records, our philosophy, Dr. Anthony's philosophy, Mr. Savage's, and mine, is that those records are strictly confidential. There's federal law that controls those records, there's state law that controls those records. And we do not deviate from those records regardless who makes the request. So, the parents of the children of this district should know that that's how we react to those requests, and that takes a lot of time. By the same token, we get requests, and Mr. Savage gets requests for personnel records. Dr. Anthony, Mr. Savage and I, again, have the same philosophy. Those are confidential records. There's governors' executive orders that deal with it, there's statute that deals with it, there's contract provisions that deal with that. And we want the staff to know, that they should be, and their families, to be comfortable to know, that we're going to protect those records. And that takes time, and that takes effort. It would be better if those requests had not been made, because there's no basis for them, because the law doesn't allow it to be produced. But nevertheless, the law requires us in responding to do certain things to explain why we're not producing those records, and that's very intensive.
Is, you're, you're, I would, Matt, one more, last question, and I told you I wouldn't be long. Now, we start getting going, right? So, if you're asking for those requests, or making these requirements or requests, what are we looking for? Like, what exact, like, if we're going to spend money, my money, your money, tax money on these Oprah requests, what the heck are we looking for?
We're not allowed to ask the question, why do you want the records? So, if someone comes in and wants to see a contract, we produce the contract. We, we're not allowed to ask them, well, why do you want the contract? We produce the contract. That's not usually a big deal. But when we get into issues that involve, as I said, student, student records and personnel records and litigation things and collective negotiation matters, which are confidential-
Right.
-it's a whole different ballgame. It's very intensive, and we're not allowed to ask, why do you want these records? By law, we're not allowed to ask that question.
All right. Well, listen, I, what I'd like to see is the board member who did request them, to raise their hand, say why they requested them, and then say, and then explain to everybody why you're wasting everybody's time and money, and say, what am I looking for? So, whoever that board member is, should be ashamed of himself if they, look, they're being sneaky right now. Talk about transparency. I don't know who it is, it might be one of you. It's any, obviously, it's a one of you. But they put a big dollar in front of us for no good reason, and that's it. I'll leave you on that.
Joe, I'd just make one comment to you. I would look at Oprah requests a lot like you look at a doctor or an emergency room. Before you need to go run off to the emergency room because you have a sniffle, you should stop at the doctor and see what the doctor has to say. Everybody and anybody in this community is welcome to come into the board, look at anybody that works within the district, and ask them if they're concerned about a particular issue or topic. Sit down and start talking. If, listen, at the end of the day, you don't believe what you're being told, you think that there's some, some hidden agenda, then an Oprah request may be an important place to go.
Right.
But we're wasting a lot of money, because Oprah requests are coming in for the sheer purpose of uncovering documents to see what may or may not be buried.
Right.
And I would just say the time and the energy and the money that's spent on it could be spent more wisely, and we could probably avoid a lot of these if we came to the table with what it is we're trying to accomplish from, from the outset.
I agree. It sounds a little fishy to me. Thank you, guys. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Tracy, thank you.[1209.66][1209.66](APPLAUSE). I'd also like to add, Mr. Stein alluded to his philosophy of how important it is to protect the rights of the children in this district and the staff who work within this district. And I just want to rest, be rest assured that I share his philosophy. Okay?
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.[1230.23][1230.23](APPLAUSE). Mr. Latelli?
Good evening. Jim Latelli, Lacy Township. And just to keep the record, yes, I am a candidate for the Lacy Township School Board. There's a couple of things I wanted to follow up on last meeting, but there was a couple of things just said tonight. And I truly appreciate the sentiments of Joe and the teacher who spoke here. But there's a board of education, they're all elective members, and as a former elective member of this board, and Mr. Stein, correct me if I'm wrong, the board members are the clients, your firm, you work for the board.
No, it's, the board itself is the client, not the individual board.
Right. As I said, board. I didn't say individual. But when an individual member of a board requests documents, why in the hell do they have to go to an Oprah request rather than just request the document directly to the board and receive them with the confidentiality of student personnel matters, which we've worked together many years? And I think that's the biggest thing, some communication, and it's something that Ms. Downing wrote, about the need to communicate better as a board. And, you know, so to sit there and pick out any one individual, you could have difference of opinions, but they should never be personal, they should be just that. You, you argue your point, you win some, you lose some. I see the district, and that's why I got involved, and I said it last week, slipping back to where it was, and I know you're in negotiations with the teachers, but you know what? There was a period of time when these teachers went years after years without settling contracts. And Ms. Downing remembers when we got on the board, we sat down in two meetings, and we had an open dialogue with the union, and the union had an open candor with us. And in two meetings, we settled a contract that was ratified by over 78 percent of the union. And to have this situation come where it's going to affect the morale of staff, it's going to affect, because you come to work, and no matter what you love, I love being a police officer, but there's days that you come to work and you're so beat up. It reflects on how you interact with people, reflects how you interact with your students. So, for the betterment of your goals and your mission and your strategic plan, sit down and be open and work this out. There's no reason for hostility on either side, and I think the biggest problem I heard is that many young teachers are in a district, there's a lot of young faces here, or I'm just getting old. But the issue here, and I'm going to say something that we put an end to when I got on a school board, the practice of settling on a percentage and then letting the union distribute that money is wrong. Every teacher, every support staff member should be treated the same, get the same percent raise. You have young teachers that are barely getting by, and let's face it, when you allow the union to put onto the higher senior people to pad their pension, it's wrong to the young ones. And so, I think it's time that this district really sits down, and I know you can't discuss it, but I would encourage the union to represent all their members, and I would encourage this board to represent the community and the staff. Now, talking about fiscal accountability, I brought up last meeting about just because the state of New Jersey raises the bid threshold, fiscal accountability means you have to have more controls. But I wanted to make sure, so I pulled the statute, 18A, 18A dash 3, bid threshold. And it clearly states right in there, in fact, it's bold and italicized in the statute, that says that the Board of Education adopted a resolution to set lower thresholds for receipt of public bids and soliciting competitive quotes. And to have fiscal accountability is very important. One of the things that we put an end to back in the 90s when I was on a board was the practice of, at that time, five schools, now we have six, of individual administrators purchasing from different vendors. That's why we built behind the high school warehouse to centralize purchasing to save money, to show accountability. I remember walking through this high school where there was ear filters piled to the ceiling, and a new shipment came in, and investigation showed in 12 years, they had never cleaned one ear filter. In fact, 19 out of 22 heating ventilation systems weren't even working, and we know that for a fact, because one of them even had a cinder brick in it, because it was a non-union job, and there was a lot of damage done during the construction. So, fiscal accountability, and I've heard Mr. Rowe and others talk about, you want to see money go to the classroom and not be wasted. You want to make sure that your teachers are compensated properly, and you want to make sure that the children are getting the best education that this district can afford. So, you have to look at making some concessions in negotiations, and there's certain things that, if I get on the board, I will bring to the union's attention that needs to be addressed. They have to, has to be give and take. But the other issue is that, and I'm going to read Mrs. Downing's report, this was from her self-evaluation, I believe.
When what year was that?
Just not here on this one. Do you remember when you did the self-evaluation?
2010? 2010?
Five years ago.
All right. So, but it says, just be short with it, "We as a board do not get to communicate with each others as often as we would like to share our thoughts and concerns. We are pressed for time in the private session and must follow the law as we cannot talk about matters because of the sunshine law outside of the meeting forum." But yet, as you recall, last meeting, I talked about returning back to the first Monday of the month to an agenda meeting, where you can have open dialogue, openly discuss the matters, have public input, and maybe reduce some of your attorney fees, because they'll be sitting at the meeting, and you could ask them the questions there instead of Oprah and, or requesting different documents. It's important that we move forward in a proper way. This, and Sean and Donna, I want to congratulate you and everybody that participated in that program for strategic planning, it's long overdue in the district. And it was nice to see not only members of the board, the community governed body, but the staff and others and the parents. That's something that should have taken a long time ago, because this district was once a highly respected district, and there's nothing against teaching, but the overall perception, the overall morale is impacted over the last couple of years. The other issues I want to talk about is, maybe, Mr. Savage, the 2006 bonds, if I review the information correctly, are up that January, they could go out for refinancing. But the problem, and I believe they're all at 4, 4.5 percent?
Yes.
Recently, some school districts have received refinancing down into the 3 percent range.
Working on it.
I know you're working on it. How is the downgrade of our credit rating going to impact on the percentage that we can refinance, or will we be able to still lower our debt?
It's my understanding we'll still be able to lower it.
Right, because, I mean, a half percent is a significant amount of money on those bonds.
I think we're going to get somewhere in the 3 percent range.
Well, that's what the current trend is, so I'm hoping, because that's a significant savings of 1 to 1.5 percent. And that shows fiscal accountability, and I applaud you, and I hope it works out on that. But the, let's just see here, I don't want to take up too much more time, but the one question I have, and I missed it last meeting because we got into open dialogue and sort of got sidetracked. Your July 20th, 2015 meeting, the minutes showed that there was four votes to reduce the tenure evaluation on teachers from three to two years, but only for the year 2015, 2016. Why, I mean, first of all, as long as I remember, education has always been a three-year tenure thing, but why would you lower it for one year only to two years?
Go ahead, Dr. Anthony.
I think you should go back and take a look, because I'm not sure if that's accurate. So, what the reduction was, and it was the amount of observations, it had nothing to do with when- do with when someone would trigger tenure rights. So it went from, and when you probably were on the board, was one evaluation for every tenured staff member and three for non-tenures. That's changed with the New Jersey Achieve Accountability Regulations. So every school district has the opportunity to submit a waiver, and there are shorts and long observations that administrators can do. So that's what that waiver is. It has nothing to do, it has nothing to do with tenure. It doesn't have anything to do with when they will achieve tenure. We have not lessened the years of tenure. What it was, is the administrators decided, instead of doing all these short evaluations throughout the year, they thought it was more beneficial to do a longer evaluation.
So my understanding is that the administrative staff and central office decided that that was a better practice. So that's what they asked for the waiver. You still have to wait that many years to be tenured, but it's just how many evaluations will you have during that process? And we opted to do longer evaluations and one less. Instead of doing short ones.
I appreciate the explanation, because I couldn't find it, and I've just found it wasn't even a complete paragraph explaining.
You could just call, like you did last time, just stop in. We'll be happy to answer all your questions.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
If I could just comment on the committees. After we did that self-evaluation, we restructured our whole committee structure. When you were on the board with me, we had maybe twelve, fourteen committees, and we each were running, you know, out every night. Now we have the super committees where we combine everything so that we can get more accomplished. So that, that was the beginning of the restructuring back in, what did I, what did I say?
Two thousand and eleven.
Five years ago.
When Mr. Martinak was president, I believe, he was the one that started with the putting together the restructuring of the committees.
But just for clarification, you said like the super committee type thing?
They're, we call them super committees, because instead of like, we meet once a week on Monday.
Record act, once you go over a majority.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
No, like instead of.
So it's not five, six committees going?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
More efficient that way.
Yeah. Just to clarify further, you hear the committee reports? Every board meeting, if we have committee reports, they're red. We're going to do that next. They're very exciting. We have three board members who participates in those committees, so just hear carefully, every board meeting since we started the super committees, we've been reading the minutes. And also, just to clarify, when Mr. Martinak was president, he did try for a year going to separating the agenda from the general meeting. We tried that for a year. The board looked at it again and decided they wanted to put it to one night. But we, our committees, meet every Monday night. So the board has a meeting every Monday night of the month, just to clarify. So there's lots of communication, lots of communication. So now to committee reports. People are leaving. Don't you want to hear the committee report? I don't think, was there any other hands? I thought Ms. Lattelier was the last hand. No? Okay. So.
Mrs. McAvoy is going to report on curriculum for me tonight.
Oh, thank you.
Ms. McAvoy, you're ready?
Yes. For curriculum. The curriculum meeting took place Monday, August twenty-fourth. In attendance was Chair Linda Downing, Donna McAvoy, Maureen Terrell, Vanessa Clark, and Sandra Anthony. We discussed some curriculum issues. The high school saks, Kelly Brown and Tom Faulkner came and gave us a brief overview of alcohol ed and the drug code. And we appreciate Ms. Brown and Mr. Faulkner for coming to provide us with their programs going on. We discussed Ready Gen Training, and the training was had, was well received, and the teachers are eager to implement the new literacy program. We discussed Myon Reading, and we discussed that four teachers will each get approximately five hours in the fall to develop the program. The cost is approximately eight hundred and sixty dollars, and it was budgeted for in the curriculum writing budget line. The Lacy Township Jump Start Dual Enrollment Program was discussed. Board Member McAvoy expressed concerns about the program, that the Jump Start courses should not carry the same weight as AP courses. The conversations have continued throughout two meetings, and we will continue discussing them at the next few curriculum meetings. We discussed a realignment of steps for secretary salary, and the health and wellness part of our committee reviewed a draft of the parent letter regarding the sale of peanut butter. Our next meeting is Monday, September twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schubaker, or Vice President Schubaker.
Thank you. Whatever you want to call me. Call it worse, probably tonight. Thank you. All right. So this is Finance and Operations Committee. I'm happy to report as chairperson, we had a very positive meeting. In attendance were Board Member Downing, Board Member Terrell, Dr. Anthony, Dr. Clark, and Mr. Savage. The topics included, the discussion of our budget as it pertains specifically to our special needs students within a district, the Garden State Cafeteria Cooperative, which will be an option for us to pursue to get better pricing on the purchasing of food and supplies for the district. We discussed potential partnership with Wawa, to have Wawa coffee within the school district. We discussed options and the feasibility of warranties associated with our energy efficiency project. We discussed dates for having another meeting with our township committee colleagues. We've been meeting with them on an ongoing basis, and they have been very healthy and productive meetings. We discussed health insurance as it pertains to the opt-out for certain employees, in the case where multiple family members may have health insurance. We discussed increases for the non-aligned staff, the non-contractual, or non-contractual employees, excuse me. We also discussed a salary adjustment for one particular employee based upon an oversight in the past and the recommendation of staff. And then we discussed some of the contracts that our business administrator has the authority to review for us, mainly, almost wholly, they deal with special education population. That was the substance of our meeting. Our next meeting, as President Terrell alluded to, we have been meeting consistently on a Monday each month, and I believe our next meeting is October fifth. So I'll be happy to report again on that meeting at the next regular public meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bidwell?
I am on the Policy Super Committee. And we met on August twenty-fourth. In attendance was President Terrell, Regina De Senza, myself, Dr. Anthony. Also in attendance was Principal Jason King from the middle school. First topic that we talked about, based on the, I guess, July's meeting here, was random drug testing and consideration of possibly including anabolic steroids in that random drug testing process. What came clear was the fact that it is very, very cost prohibitive, mostly due to the myriad of different anabolic steroids that are on the market today, and that in addition to the cost, the testing also may not be effective. We discussed with Jason King the possibility of exploring random drug testing at the middle school. Still quite a bit of work to do there. We decided that we were going to follow up and have a meeting with Matt Franz from Sports Safe the following month, in order to get some more information, to understand what the pros and cons and challenges of this type of program might be. We discussed eight separate policies or regulations, went through a variety of them, reviewed their revisions, and I guess they were processed through for today's meeting. We reviewed the job description for head coach. We also reviewed the school visitation policy ninety-one fifty, and considered some possible language changes, which we ultimately determined we would not. And then we adjourned.
Thank you. And Mrs. De Senza?
Yes, I have the minutes for the Policy Committee meeting of September fourteenth. In attendance was the Chair, Maureen Terrell, myself, Mr. Bidwell, and Dr. Anthony. The first item was, the Policy Committee had a Skype session with Matt Franz, Sports Safe Testing Services, to continue discussing middle school random drug testing policy. Dr. Anthony also provided us a copy of the memorandum of agreement, which is with the school district and the police committee. And the third item for discussion were eight policies that were up for suggested updates, recommendations, revising. And the head coach job description revision is in tonight's agenda, and that's all we had for September. And the next meeting will be the day after Columbus Day. It'll be a Tuesday.
Thank you.
President Terrell, I apologize. Can I just make an addendum to my report?
Absolutely.
I failed to mention that, especially in regards to the presentation on special education budget. Michael Maskey, our Director of Special Services, was not only there, but gave a wonderful presentation. And I apologize for the oversight. Thank you for being there. And wouldn't you know, I believe that was after the end of your normal school day. So look at that. Thanks for putting in the extra time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And at this time, we are going to segue right into board comments. Mrs. De Senza, would you like to begin?
Yes, that would be fine. I'd like to thank all the members of the public in attendance tonight. The total cost for employee benefits this month was one million, one hundred twenty thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents, and this is on page thirty-seven of the agenda, page eighteen of the Bills and Claims Report. And congratulations to Kelly and Jack and unsung hero Brielle. Great job. Welcome back to all the students and staff, and I hope everyone had a great summer break. Thank you very much to Ms. Hughes for organizing the pep rally on the evening of September eighth. It was great to see the enthusiasm of all the fall sports students. Back-to-school night at the high school was very well attended. Everyone seems happy with the one-to-one Chromebook initiative. And I look forward to an increase in student achievement in coming years with the addition of this technology for all students in the high school and implementation of the strategic plan. The Chromebooks are a step by increasing technology access for all students in the high school. I also stopped by the Milpon Back-to-School Night, and the building looks great for its age. I also went back to school night at Forkhead River. It was very nicely decorated with many student projects, and it's quite impressive for only being back to school about a week. The same was true at Lenoka Harbor School. Back-to-school night, it was also well attended. I thank all of the parents for coming out to meet their child's teachers. The parent-teacher relationship is extremely important for student success. I had been chastised by certain people that I have not been working on the goal of student achievement, but that is not true. I, like everyone else here, want nothing more than complete success for every student in our district. Several years ago, when my oldest son first attended Mates in Manahawken, known as one of America's best high schools in U.S. News and Media Report, I began to go to the PTSL meeting. I learned that Mates was giving the PSAT to both the sophomore and junior classes. I, as a citizen and parent, came forward to Lacy School Board Meeting and shared this information and asked for it to be done here at Lacy as well. The cost was quite nominal. The PSAT, when taken twice, gives the students a double warm-up for the SAT. Taking the PSA twice greatly enhances the possibility of a higher score on the SAT. Many colleges give full tuition merit scholarships for these higher scores. The trade-off of a test in exchange for thousands of dollars in college tuition costs is well worth the effort. For the first time this year, Lacy High School could be giving the PSAT to both the sophomore and junior classes this October. At no expense to the sophomores, last year the parents paid seventeen dollars per test. If this had been done when I first S about six or seven years ago, we would be seeing the results of that now. But at least it's being done and combined with the Chromebook. I look forward to Lacy's increased ranking in the near future. We will get above state averages on the SATs because we are just a few points away. The double PSAT should help achieve that goal. And just a quick reminder about Meet the Board Member Night, I'm going to be hosting at the Lacy Library next Monday, September twenty-eighth, from six to eight P.M. And any two other board members may join me if they wish. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Bidwell?
Thank you, President Terrell. I just have a few comments tonight. First and foremost is about the strategic plan. Obviously, a lot of work, time, and effort has gone into it. But what I would caution you on is that this is only really the very beginning. So there is a ton of work to make this company fruition. I know that Dr. Anthony and her entire staff, all the teachers, administrators, citizens, et cetera, et cetera, are up to the challenge, but just don't want anybody to think that this is the finished product, because this is not the finished product. This is the map. This is where we go from here. I wasn't going to talk about this, but now I feel the need to. We've been criticized quite a bit last few meetings. I watched the meeting last month on TV, because I was not here, and it was quite contentious, I would say. One of the things that seems to come up all the time, and tonight, Mr. Vicaro, Mr. Lattelier, and Mr. Rizzoli all discussed our lack of financial prudence. And I get it. I mean, at the end of the day, we don't, nobody's raising their hand saying, we want to pay more taxes, charge me more, take money from me. Nobody wants that. But there are certain sets of realities. And what I really would like to see is have a little bit of sense of where we actually are. Get some facts, know where we stand relative to our cohorts, so you know how we're doing. So I pulled some of that data from the Department of Education. Our cost per pupil in Lacy is seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Now cohort would be described as a district that has thirty-five hundred or more students in that district. There's a hundred and three of them. The average cohort, average, so you're talking about roughly the fifty-fifth school in that, or fifty-third school in that list, is nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars, cost per pupil. So they are, on average, nineteen hundred dollars more cost per pupil than we are. Add that to our budget of roughly forty-four hundred students, and you're talking about eight-point-three million dollars. Our budget is eight-point-three million dollars less than our average cohort in the state. Again, I'm not saying that we should be raising our taxes eight-point-three million dollars. I'm not up for that. I know nobody's up for that. But I just want to make sure that we have a perspective to work under. Administrative salaries and benefits per pupil, Lacy is seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. Our cohorts are at one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Four hundred and thirty-eight dollars less is Lacy than our cohorts. Again, that's about a two-million-dollar difference, our administration compared to our cohort's administration. Median teacher salaries, Lacy's median teacher salary is fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Our cohorts are sixty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. The difference of about seven thousand dollars. You can understand why these teachers come down and are upset and feel that they are being underpaid. Again, I'm not suggesting that we raise all of our teachers seven thousand dollars, but I am suggesting that we recognize where we stand when we make comments like we are fiscally non-prudent or imprudent. Median administrator salaries, Lacy, a hundred and three dollars, a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Our cohort is a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two, for an average difference of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. So just my point is, hey, listen, I'm not saying we should be going running out and raising taxes, and two percent is two percent. But at the end of the day, let's have a perspective on where we are today. We can work together to try and make things better, but this is where, what the reality is. That's all for me.
Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy?
Good evening. In the ongoing spotlight on recent graduates, I want to talk tonight about Rebecca Morzinski. She's a two thousand and ten graduate. She went on and graduated from Rutgers. From there, she went on to Palmer Chiropractic School in Florida, where she's now one of the highest-ranking students in her class, and she'll be graduating soon with her doctorate in chiropractic medicine. So congratulations to Rebecca. Carolyn Hines, graduated in two thousand and ten from the high school. In May, she graduated with degrees in English and Special Ed. She currently got her first teaching job, teaching seventh and eighth grade, English Language Arts at Southern Regional. So congratulations to Rebecca also. I want to thank all the residents for coming out tonight and giving us your opinions and your views, and trying to work together with the board to make the district a better place. I'm looking forward to more communication with the board, with more concentration on student achievement. I'm looking forward to trying to get our attorney's bills more under control, so we can use that money more to our advantage to help the students. And I'm just looking forward to a great school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kierdanam?
Thank you, President Terrell. I'd like to start out with the core reason why we're here tonight, and to congratulate our Students of the Month, Jack, Kelly, and Brielle. our Students of the Month, Jack, Kelly, and Brielle. Can't believe another school year is upon us. Everything looks great. The buildings look great. It's an exciting school year. For all those seniors, take advantage of it. It goes by in a blink of an eye. I'd also like to thank our donors once again, some very generous contributions tonight. You know, without them, a lot of things would not be possible. So we really appreciate what they, what they have given us. You know, I'll talk about the strategic plan a bit here again. And I think Board Member Bidwell had stated that, again, this is only a framework. This is only the beginning. It's a living document. There is still a lot of work that needs to be done. It's a three-year plan. It's a comprehensive plan, but there is a lot of moving parts. So we encourage the continued participation of everyone that was involved. Please continue to share your thoughts. Please continue to volunteer for the subcommittees, the committees. I believe that this is the first time this school district's had a strategic plan. Every board member that sits up here on the dais was instrumental in agreeing to bring that forward. And I think we're all passionate about one thing, and that's student achievement, right? And that's what we talked about as the mainstay of why we put the plan in place, to maximize that. You know, a lot of talk about finances, and I, you know, I'll commend Board Member Bidwell for bringing up some numbers and whatnot. You know, it pains me to see teachers have to come down and present because you guys are the backbone of this district. And I want you to know, at least from where I sit, my father taught for thirty-five years. I'm very familiar with education. You guys are the lifeblood of what this district is all about, your professionalism, what you do day in and day out, what you provide to our students. Just know that we are working very hard to put something that is fair and equitable out and palatable. And I think you also mentioned, Mr. Bidwell, about knowing the facts. When you come up and you talk about finances, you talk about percentages and gaps, know the facts. Come into the board office and look at the numbers. Nobody's hiding anything. Nothing is hidden under the covers. The numbers are all there. And I think every one of us that sits up here, number one priority is that our kids get the best education possible with the tax dollar, right? The best education possible. Not an easy job, right? We're all doing the best we can. And I'll end my comments on that note.
Thank you. Mrs. Downey?
Thank you, Mrs. Terrell. First, I'd like to thank the chorus for being here tonight. It was a great way to start our meeting, and I have to agree with Mr. Vaccaro. I think we should have song at every meeting because it really started us off on a good foot. I also want to thank everyone that participated in the pep rally. We had a meeting at the board office, but we were able to get there towards the end of the pep rally, and everybody was so pumped up. It was great. Brought back some old memories of me being in high school just a couple of years ago. I would also like to thank members of the Seabreeze. We met with them, Seabreeze community, last week, I guess it was, and Mrs. Martin, thank you for participating in that. We go to a lot of meetings, and we all came out of there feeling so refreshed and so energetic about the meeting. So thank you. And look forward to meeting with you again soon.
Your time is appreciated. The day was extended. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all of the people who donated. The list is, if you look at the agenda, is really long this month. So thank you that you are the backbone, helping us getting things that we wouldn't be able to get otherwise. So thank you so much. Want to congratulate the Students of the Month, Kelly and Jack, starting off the school year. They're the first Students of the Month. And Brielle, we look forward to seeing you in October. I want to thank all the teachers, the staff, the administration, the bus drivers, custodians, everyone that works for the district for making the school opening such a pleasant one, such an easy one for the students. And just a reminder to the public, please be careful when you're driving and watch those big yellow things called school buses. I saw a couple of people go right by with their lights flashing, and you just hold your breath and pray there's no child walking across. So please be aware and remember the law when it comes to going past a school bus. And that's it, Mrs. Terrell. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Schubberger.
Thank you, President Terrell. I have a number of comments. Start off with, of course, our students, most importantly. It occurred to me tonight at some point that the seniors who started their school year not long ago this year, my first year as a board member, they started as kindergartners. Wow. That's pretty amazing for them. So it goes by quick. This shows, and I'm seeing that with my own children. I want to thank everybody involved with getting the school year started. I have three children who actually attend this district. And my main concern is that they leave in the morning safely, they get picked up safely, they're happy, and when they get back, they're safe and they're still happy. Now, some days, they're not really, really happy. But I have to tell you, they're coming back smiling. They're happy, they're safe, and you know what? That's all I can ask for. So to everyone who's part of that whole operation that we call the Lacy Township School District, thank you for that alone. Students of the Month, thank you for starting us off on a solid, positive note once again. I've said this before, I will say it again. What amazes me about our students, particularly here in Lacy Township, is the diverse interests that our students have. Their dreams and goals are so very different, but yet the same, to succeed. And I'm just so proud to be a part, a little part, of what they're achieving here in Lacy. All of our donors, each and every month, we have it on our agenda, and we speak to it on occasion. We really can't do what we do here without the community support and the business support from our, from the business community that we get. And I'm so thankful to all of you for continuing to help make this district what it is. I want to point out, if I may, I don't like to do this, we appreciate everybody, but this Cubby Fit Trail, I think it's awesome. I think my colleagues on here have known me for a while, know how important I find sort of the whole education of our student and the physical fitness aspect of it. I think it was a great idea of the school and the district, and also for the business community to support it. The empirical data is out there, how important that is to help us academically as kids and adults. So there's no need to really explain that in greater detail, except that it's a great thing, and I'm happy that it's occurring. Back-to-school nights, it is a difficult task for each school. We had some new principals who put them together for the first time, and you know what? They did a great job. I was able to attend a few, not all of them. And a lot happens in a short amount of time, and it, as we scurry through the hallways as parents or board members. So a lot goes into it. Thank you. It's a good way to start our school year off. Couple other things. One is, I want to, Dr. Anthony, I'm appalled that I was not aware that there is a board, Meet the Board Member Night that we sponsor. So if you could please give some information on that, I would appreciate it. Because I don't know if I can participate, but I would like to know about it. The bond rating, that is something that has come up, and somebody brought it up tonight. I apologize for the speaker who brought it to our attention. Those bonds, I know they're in good hands with Mr. Savage. The percentage rate, absolutely a quarter of a percent. Many of us have had to apply for loans. We know how much that can impact a car or a house or a bond. I'm happy to report that after some time, we did get a letter from the township committee stating how they promise, they make a promise, and they're going to work with us to make sure that the school district gets the taxpayers' money that we're supposed to be getting in a timely fashion. Because unfortunately, the fact that that didn't happen on occasion, not all the time, it happened a few times, it impacted that bond rate, and that's a shame. But this partnership that we continue to develop with our colleagues over on Lacy Road is important, it's critical. I'm glad that it's on the right track, and I'm glad that they responded to us because in the end, it's about all of our tax dollars. So that's a step in the right direction, and I'm hoping that helps us with that rate. Couple comments on the Oprah Law, Open Public Records. A question was raised about, why don't we just give the information to board members? Can't agree more. The question was, how are we going to handle it? Well, I'll tell you what I will do. Doesn't mean it's right, but this is what I would do. If there's something that, I know there's a document that exists because I've either seen it before or I've heard about it from our administration, I'm going to ask for it. If there is something that I'm not sure if it exists, or something I want to look into, maybe there's a concern or issue that's brought to my attention by a resident, the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to share the concern with my colleagues on the board. Because I am one board member, I do not operate unilaterally of the board. We are one board, and we must create some cohesion and have a little bit of togetherness up here on the board. So not easy, I might add. But I would call a couple of board members, find out what they thought about it, then I'd call another one. Maybe we'd have four or five people who said, "You know what? You know what? You got something. That's a concern. You got to look into that." At that point, I would find out if I can request information and get it. And you know what? I'm pretty sure we would get it if it was within the state law, state law. And I know Mr. Savage would make sure that we got it in a timely fashion if it was permissible. So however, if I was told, you know what? Eric, you're wrong on this one. You may not have thought about it correctly. That's not something that you can have as a board member. What I would not do is continue to ask for or create work that would cost us money and take money away from our students. That's how I would handle it, to answer the question wherever it came from. I can't recall. So that's one board member's view on how we would handle that. Regarding fiscal accountability, it continues to come up, and it should. I don't know if I've talked about this publicly, so I'm going to talk about it now. Your tax dollars, it's a big pie chart. Think of it as a big pie chart. In every district and every town, municipality, excuse me, around the state of New Jersey, I'd say at least a very high majority of them, the school district is the greatest portion of your tax bill. We know that. So the biggest part should and does, as we've seen here, get the highest group rate, and we're all okay with that. That's why we're up here. We take the hits. But I must tell you that over a pretty long extended period of time here, while we can always do better, the school tax levy, that school levy portion of your tax bill has gone up approximately seventeen percent over the last eight years. Seventeen percent is a high number. We can do better, and we're trying. But by comparison, the municipal tax levy portion of your budget over that same time period is about a hundred and twenty-five percent higher than what it was eight years ago. So if seventeen percent is not good and you don't like that, think about the other number. I'll just leave it at that. Now, mind you, the municipal portion of your tax bill is much smaller than your school portion of your tax bill. So sit back, take a, relax for a second. Imagine if the people who were responsible for raising the municipal portion of your tax bill, a hundred and twenty-five percent, were responsible for this budget. Then think about what your taxes would be. Take a few seconds. Okay. Think about that. I'm talking, that's just one portion, and I don't want to, I don't have the number. I'm going with the numbers that I know. So when we're talking about accountability, we have a great responsibility that we're trying to meet, to keep the taxpayer in check. And some people came up here, we know people are struggling, and we're very privy to that, and we understand that. But I think everyone needs to understand the big picture when we're talking about tax dollars. So I'm glad this school year has started off on a great note. I'm glad we got to talk about education. And I got to tell you, like I said before, I was rejuvenated, and it was very refreshing for me as a forty-some-odd-year resident of this town with kids going to this school district and former student, to go to those sessions and see how people were interested in education. Because I got to tell you, there's times in the past couple of years I said, "You know what? I'm not feeling so good about this, people's interest in education right now. But I feel a lot better now, and this plan is going to take us where we need to go." Thank you.
Thank you. I know you've heard a lot tonight, so I will try to keep it brief. But I do have to start off with the students because that's why we're here. So Kelly, who, she probably doesn't remember me, I probably looked a lot different, but since I've known her coming up through the school district with my kids since kindergarten, it's so impressive to see what a fine young lady she's become. And Jack, again, very impressive, another mechanical engineer in the making. We hope you come back and share your talents with our district when you're, finish your education. Brielle, we can't wait to meet you next month. Carly and Lindsay, this was their first official night, being our student representatives. And again, how impressive is that, that these fine young ladies have the wherewithal to be able to talk in front of this huge group that we had tonight and share with you what's going on at our high school? And that's just how impressive our students are. Now to move to the teachers. The back-to-school nights were phenomenal. So much energy. Yes, we're in negotiations now. Yes, there's never going to be enough money to make up the losses that our teachers have had over the years. They, our whole staff, from superintendent on down, took a salary freeze. That money was never made up to them years ago. We have many of our staff and administrators who have suffered from Hurricane Sandy, who lost homes. It's, there's never a way to make it up. And for teachers, I'm an attorney. I work for the state. I don't make much money, but that's a choice. If I wanted to make more money, I'd go work for a private firm. Teachers don't have that option. If they have a passion and a love for teaching, the public school system is really the system. And so we appreciate it all, and I was so impressed, the energy I saw back-to-school nights, how active and motivated the teachers are, and so many of the teachers took their own time this summer and received training on the one-to-one devices. They were not compensated for that. That's how impressive our teaching staff is. And, you know, I just don't think we give them enough credit, and we do not compensate them enough, but we compensate them what this community can afford. But I'm just telling you, it's never enough. So I want to give you a round of applause. Some more applause. Mr. Murman is still here, and he is at the high school, along with some of our other folks in the high schools. They have to be at school very early. Mr. Murman did our video. He runs our channel twenty-one that you will watch this broadcast on. So the video was very impressive. And again, Mr. Murman, thank you. Dr. Anthony, not only is she a doctor but a superintendent, but she also would put all of my computer skills to shame. She single-handedly produced this. All that you see was not written by anybody else, was not produced by anybody else. Everything you see was done by Dr. Anthony. So I thank her for her commitment to our strategic planning and for bringing this document to the district. And briefly, we have a lot of work to do this fall. I'm very excited about all the opportunities, and it's nice to see lots of new faces in the audience, and we welcome everybody from the community to join in. So thank you for coming out tonight. And now, let's get to new business. In regard to new business on page forty-one, A through Q, do I have a motion? A through Q, so let me get you the pages. Pages forty-one through fifty.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Giordano, okay, roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensis.
Yes on all, except abstain on D and E and not for conflict.
I'm sorry, B and E?
B and E.
D, as in Donna.
As in Donna, and E?
And not for conflict.
Not for conflict.
Mr. Giordano. Yes. Mrs. McAvoy.
Abstain on K for ineligible ability, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Downey.
I have to abstain on D, and I also have to abstain on K, otherwise all yeses.
Mr. Schuberger.
I'm going to abstain.
I'm going to abstain on items D and K because I think it's the right thing to do and I'm going to vote yes on the remainder.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.
Sure.
We have our three Ks, we have C, we have three Ds, we have T, we have three yeses. Okay, cool. Okay. Okay. Yep. Yes, yes.
Okay, and on page 50, our donations. I'm only going to quickly read the ones we have not already discussed. And Exelon did, provided a donation to Cedar Creek that also went to the Cubby Fit in the amount of $250. Cedar Creek School PTA, which again is our teachers, our parents, they donated $250 to the Staff Orientation Breakfast. The Naden Family, for our library books, $50 went to Cedar Creek. Wells Fargo Foundation, a check for $600 went to Cedar Creek. Shopperoo, donation, one check for $659 went to Cedar Creek. And the Ruska family, a reptile tank in the value of $800 went to Cedar Creek. In regard to Forked River, Wawa donated for the Staff Orientation Breakfast, $250. And Ms. Terry Kelly from the Women's Club of Forked River. Tuna Club provided school supplies to our schools in the amount of $300. Oh, that went to Forked River, for $300. Lenoka Harbor, the Wawa also donated to the Staff Breakfast in the amount of $250. At Mill Pond, the PTA, again, the teachers and the parents donated to the Staff Breakfast in the amount of $250. Velfor donated to the high school for the Staff Breakfast in an amount of $550. And Wawa Forked River donated to the Staff Breakfast in the amount of $400. Do I have a motion for the donation?
Move.
Second.
Second.
All, oh, roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes, and thank you very much to Thompson Healthcare and all the other donors.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes, thanks.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. On page 51, do I have a motion for item A?
Move.
Second.
Roll calls.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Also on 51 for professional days and workshops, I apologize. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
For A.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Abstain.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. On page 52, certificated personnel, do I have a motion?
Move.
A through N.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
I'm going to abstain on I, yes on the others.
Mr. Schubiger.
No on K, yes on the remainder.
Mrs. Terrell.
On page 55, support non-certificated staff personnel, A through I, do I have a motion? Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Thank you. And at this time, I believe we have two add-on motions. In regard to the two add-on motions?
Dave, you want to? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we move the elections for Board of Ed from November to April in 2017. Again, as we discussed earlier, I've had quite a few conversations with the public and it seems to be something that they desire at this point in time. Obviously, it carries a lot of pros and cons, but something I felt that we should move forward at this time. To April 17.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
I'm going to abstain, having second thoughts.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
I'm also abstaining. There, I believe, was also another add-on motion in regard to...
Yeah, I think I have.
Do you have that in regard to the uniforms?
Yeah.
And just so the public understands, these are things that were discussed at the agenda meeting and the board then decided they would like to add along tonight.
Requested board is after motion, move to donate old, out-of-date band uniforms, which the business administrator has established have a minimal value because of extended age and condition to the Lacy Township Band Parents Association.
Is that their name, lady?
Performing arts boosters.
The performing arts boosters?
Yes.
Performing arts boosters.
Performing, Lacy Township Performing Arts Boosters.
That's it.
Not Lacy Township High School.
No, no.
So, it should be amended to Lacy Township Performing Arts Boosters.
And just to clarify for the public, this was a request by the boosters. The old uniforms are no longer being used and just sitting around and they thought they could make some use of them. So, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensel.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. And I believe we also have a motion for private session, to go back into private session.
We did, we did that already. Oh, motion taken. Are we closing the meeting?
Before we move on that motion, President Terrell, I have one question about, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Regarding the, moving the election to the April date, which on its face, it seems to be, I'm getting a lot of comments from the public that, from this perspective of moving it to April alone, that they seem to think that's a good idea. But I was hoping, just for the public's awareness and also for mine, just to be sure, I'm certain of this, what else would be changed in the way of our operations if the election were to be moved to April, like we discussed and moved on tonight?
Well, one of the things that we've shared with the public through our fact sheet and talked about, at least since the June board meeting, July board meeting, August board meeting, and tonight, that there will be a cost to the school district. They will have to pay for the elections in the fall elections, since they are, there's always state and county elections also occurring in November. We do not pay for the cost of the elections, but if we move the elections to April, we will have to bear it. We'll have to be part of the school budget to bear that cost. Also, under the law, the 2% cap on increasing of spending, that is only enforced on school districts if they move their elections to November elections. And that's one of the reasons why there was such great support throughout the state and there still is. There's not another county in Ocean, not another school district in Ocean County. And I think, what did I say? Seventeen, only seventeen districts in the whole state have their elections in the spring because of the cost and the lifting of the 2% cap.
Okay. That also means that the public will have an opportunity to vote on the school board budget?
Yes.
Okay. So, if that's the case, I just have...
What would it be with your term in office?
Okay.
Okay, that's a fair question. The, just as when we moved the elections to November, the people who were supposed to run for that year, it would extend their terms. So, for my term, it's not going to be extended. Those people who would normally run in November of 2016, their election would not occur until April of 2017. So, it's a tough thing. We've been hearing a lot of public outcry for this, but there's pros and cons. Um, no, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have one comment to make, excuse me for a second. So, being that we've made this move, it seems to be a lot of public support for it. What I'd like to do is publicly call upon our colleagues over at the, on Lacy Road, our Township Committee, that since the budget that they've been responsible for, for a long time, and over the last eight years, has gone up over 125% of your school, of your tax levy. We're doing it and our taxes are pretty stabilized. I'd like them to research in any way possible that we all, as residents, have an opportunity to vote on their budget as well. Thank you.
I'm not going to open the floor back up. We're...
There's an illegal amendment on that motion that you just took because the state statute says you can only take that vote after the fourth year. Fourth year. You're still prior to the fourth year, so therefore, that's an illegal motion that you took unless your attorney says otherwise. But the law says after the fourth year. We'll look at it.
And we'll look at it, thank you. I'm not in support of the motion.
I know you're not, I just, I don't wish...
Right. No, and I, I thank you. And I know that there has been discussion with New Jersey school boards, that board members have had those discussions with New Jersey school boards, so they are under the impression that they can do so. So, we'll talk to New Jersey school boards and Mr. Stein again. Right, right. Well, one of the attorneys from school boards did weigh in on it. So, but, thank you, and we will continue to clarify that. Obviously, if we need to rescind or whatever action needs to be taken, we will do so. But we do need to adjourn into private session.
And adjourn the meeting.
And actually adjourn the meeting. We will not be coming back after private session.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second. Second.
The local act will be taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any.
Thank you.